Good evening. It is Thursday, July 23rd, 2020, and this is the regular meeting of the Spring Hill City Council. It is 7:00 PM, and we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Our first order of business, as always, will be our invocation. We're happy to have with us Pastor Michael Brown from United Methodist Church. Pastor Brown, you have the floor.
Please adopt a solemn attitude, as I pray. Dear wise heavenly Father, we wish to thank you this day, to thank you for the many blessings that are bestowed upon this great city, to thank you for the freedom to meet together in this place, to make decisions together as community. We ask for your blessings upon those who safeguard that freedom, especially our local first responders. There is a great responsibility on everyone in this room. Therefore, I pray today for our mayor, for the various city officials and staff, and particularly for the assembled council today. May you grant to these people tonight the wisdom to govern your people according to your will, a sense of the true needs of the citizens, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, the grace to work together even if honest disagreement is present, and finally, a personal peace, both tonight and in their lives. May you grant them joy today as they go about their task. Grant these things today, Lord, we pray, in true thanksgiving and expectation. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Please continue to stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Leighton?
Here.
Mr. Owen?
Here.
Mr. Graves?
Here.
Mr. Eckert? Mrs. Hughes?
Here.
Mayor, we do have a quorum present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Eckert did contact me earlier indicating he would not be able to join us this evening. Next item is approval of the agenda. I don't have any requested staff additions or deletions, any requested council changes.
Mayor, move to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion at a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 400. Next item is citizen participation. This is an opportunity in the meeting for residents to address the council on subjects not already on the agenda. Anyone wishing to do so, we just ask that you step up to the lectern, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have the council's attention. For the two people who had signed up for the discussion about chickens in the city limits, that's actually a discussion item, and we will welcome your comments when we get to item number five. We should be able to move through the agenda pretty quickly tonight. I have one person signed up on a different subject, Mr. Trost, in regard to roads. Sir, can you step up to the lectern and provide your name and address for the clerk? Welcome.
Good to have the opportunity. My name is Tom, last name is Trost, T like in Tom, R-O-S-T, 21620 Wilson Street. I just have a simple question. Are there any plans to resurface Webster Street?
We actually have some plans in place, and Mr. Leighton, would you mind fielding that question?
Well, currently, and Mr. Henderson, correct me if I misstate anything, but we've been working with the city engineer on retainer to come up with a plan for possibly repairing the cracks that are out there as a partial depth, so that it provides a good base, and then we'll provide a two-inch overlay, correct, of C-bet? Can't remember.
There's options available for a
Right, but that was one of the options.
Or the U-bass.
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 I forgot. I couldn't remember the actual term. It's an asphaltic-type material that'll come over the top. Was it two inch? It's not two-inch overlay, it's about a
It's about an inch.
It's about an inch that'll come over. And it's a, it's a material that a lot of the other cities in the metropolitan area use. That's one of the options. We're evaluating other options, and it's going to be based on some cost, too. And those options, Mr. Henderson, when are they going to provide those options or alternatives to the city council? It's supposed to be pretty soon.
Yes, we're still waiting to get the official results back from core samples that were taken there and have those evaluated, but the project is in the CIP.
Okay, but when do we anticipate getting the core samples? Those were taken easily over a month ago.
I believe as soon as our city engineer returns from vacation, which was this week, we should have something back very soon.
Okay, so probably what, in the next council meeting or two?
I would expect so, yes.
We'll have the alternatives presented to us?
Yes, sir.
Cost?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Trost, one of the benefits of the U-bass system is, is that it doesn't require the same level of effort, so it is a significantly lower cost than other replacement options, and it's one that provides durability for the street, so.
I think I'm familiar with it.
Okay.
That's excellent, excellent news, because Webster Street, to me, is an embarrassment that to have any friends. And that's the main road through Spring Hill, and it looks like, well, you all know what it looks like.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you.
And we did look at like a fill-in overlay type thing, and this is actually going to be a more cost-effective possible, so.
Okay, great. Let's
Thank you, Mr. Trost. Floor remains open. Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close that portion of the agenda and move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor, move, but we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion at a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 400. This takes us to the first of our formal council action items. This is a consideration of ordinance pertaining to expenditures and use of local alcohol liquor funds. Mr. Jenkins, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, this matter has been before you several times to reach the point that now we can adopt a regular ordinance that would enable the city to expand the options or to clarify how it could use the taxes that are received from the city, from the alcohol tax fund. We receive a reimbursement or rebate, rebate back from the state of taxes that are collected in the city, and therefore, there's an enumeration of what we can spend it on. But historically, there's been a question about what that entails. And there's been several legislative audits trying to clarify that, but the state legislature has not expanded the scope of what those uses could be. This ordinance would enable the city to have greater flexibility in how it may elect to use those funds. And I'd stress that this statute or ordinance does not specify or obligate the city for using these specified programs. It just enables you to have the authority to do so. So I'd recommend the adoption of that ordinance for amending section 11.07. That's the wrong statute. The ordinance would be, or motion would be for, to adopt the ordinance 2020 relating to the local alcohol liquor fund.
2020-10, Mr. Jenkins?
Yes, sir. Mayor, move, mayor, move that we approve ordinance 2020-10?
Second. We have a motion at a second. Is there any discussion? If not, it's an ordinance. We'll vote by roll. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll of the council, please.
Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mr. Owen?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Ordinance carries 400. Next item is consideration of ordinance prohibiting the unlawful discharge of firearms and unlawful hunting within the city. Mr. Jenkins, you have the floor.
This ordinance is enabling the city to amend the Uniform Public Offense Code published by the League of Kansas Municipalities. It's a uniform statute ordinance, and in reviewing it, it's been determined that you cannot discharge, or excuse me, you cannot be charged for discharging a firearm in the city only if it isn't a reckless matter. This came up in a municipal court case where the defense counsel raised the argument that, well, how are you going to prove the difference between a negligent discharge of the weapon versus reckless? And so a recommendation would be to eliminate having to prove whether it's reckless or negligent. The burden would be just to establish that they did discharge the weapon in the city. And so that's the main purpose of this ordinance, and recommendation would be to adopt that motion to amend section 11.07 of the Public Offense Code relating to the discharge of firearms within the city. And I'm amending, amending actually 6.21 of the Public Offense Code relating to hunting within the city. I mentioned that that also would preclude the hunting of, or using the discharge of weapons to hunt in the city.
Mayor, move to approve ordinance 2020-11?
Second. We have a motion at a second. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, it is an ordinance. Would you call the roll of the council, please?
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mr. Eckert? I'm sorry. Mr. Eckert is not here. Mr. Owen?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Ordinance carries 400. Mr. Jenkins, thank you very much. As promised, we have moved into discussion item number five, a petition to allow chickens within city limits. I am absolutely delighted to invite some, or hopefully all of the young people who stopped by my house a couple of months ago to talk about their petition. Does somebody have a copy of the petition?
Yeah.
The language?
What do you mean by that?
The actual language that you had at the front of your petition? Do you have that?
Um, yeah, I have like five of them now, because we have a lot more signatures.
Terrific. Could I ask you, before you start, to read into the record your petition? Not all of the names, just what you wrote.
All right. I think a little town made up of mostly farms should be allowed to have chickens. We are a population of 7,869 and are hardly as big as some other towns that allow these birds. I understand no roosters or trashy-looking coop, and I understand people not being able to have a lot of chickens. How much harm could some chickens do? I know several people in this town loathe this rule. I have a suggestion for the rule. You should have to ask all your direct neighbors if they would mind, and then you can have them. I can prove that people agree with this petition. We have, counting the paper that you had, we have about 320 signatures.
Fantastic, and that is excellent and industrious work. I'm going to call you out on your edit on the fly, what you actually wrote. I understand people not being able to have a million chickens. I think he's okay with around 900,000, but not a million, so. You did excellent work on this, and I appreciate you reading that for the council's consideration. I would like you to tell us what your thoughts are with regard to chickens, what the benefits are, why it is so many people are interested in this. Could you do that for us?
Yeah, I actually have a speech.
Terrific. Prior to speaking, for the clerk, if you could give us your name and your address.
All right, I'm Jacob Tisber, and I live on Skyview Lane, 20869.
Go right ahead, Jacob.
Why do I have two speeches? Oh, it's in my phone.
I am going to tell you, you are also giving a speech tonight at the very first meeting that we're live streaming on YouTube. So Jacob, you are about to be a star.
Awesome.
He's getting on YouTube after all.
We should bring chickens to Spring Hill.
Jacob, could you step up to the microphone for us?
Oh, yeah.
Terrific.
We should bring chickens to Spring Hill because they give you eggs that have more nutrients and flavors than store-bought eggs. They will eat pesky creatures such as mosquitoes, bedbugs, horseflies, flea beetles, ticks, and small mice. Many people think chickens can hurt property values. There has never been evidence supporting this claim, but the exact opposite has been proven true. Chicken droppings is a good fertilizer for gardens or compost piles. Chickens will eat just about anything, including table scraps. People may think that chickens are noisy, but in fact, chickens have the same decibel level as human conversation as their loudest, which is 60 through 70 decibels. Compared to a dog's bark, which can reach over 90 decibels, chickens can hardly be called a noisy animal. Also, many people are concerned about the smell of chickens, but a well-cleaned coop has no odor to it. They will help your family closer to making their own organic food. There is more use of chickens than just eggs, such as pets, therapy panels, hobby showbirds, 4-H projects for egg color variation, and to preserve the heritage breeds in danger of extinction. Aletha has more houses than Spring Hill, and they allow chickens. Prairie Village, Overland Park, Kansas City, Missouri, Shawnee, Lenexa, Gardner, and the most wealthy city in America, Atherton, California, allows chickens to live inside the city limits. In summary, I think keeping a small flock of chickens in your backyard has many benefits, from supplying you with fresh, healthy eggs from well-cared-for animals, to giving you a great fertilizer for gardening, to provide lively pets, as well as being part of a drive to a local sustainable food system. And I kind of have a set of rules that you can maybe put up if y'all would want one of them papers.
Certainly. You can approach. I'll ask you to save one of those and give it to Ms. Garrity or city clerk, and that way she'll have it for the official record, okay? Mr. Leighton and I can share. Going to Mr. Owen for me? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And Jacob, if you wouldn't mind going ahead and reading those for us?
All right. There could be a limit of eight hens and no roosters, like, not at all. A chicken needs two square feet, so depending on how many chickens you have, that's how big your coop has to be. A coop size would differ on how many hens you have, or a limited size of 16 through 20 square feet. You need to keep your coop cleaned, so it doesn't smell. And you have to have a predator-proof coop and a fenced-off area, also known as a run for your chickens. Chickens would be meant for egg production only, not meat. Backyard slaughter is not permitted. You must get permission from your neighbor if you want to put the coop or run closer to them, 15 feet to your shared property line.
Okay. So you, you recommend eight hens, no roosters. Is that number flexible based upon the size of a person's backyard? So for example, if somebody has an exceptionally small backyard, should that number change?
Sure, yeah.
And do you believe the same set of rules would apply to people who have, for example, shared property, like a duplex or a fourplex?
Um, probably not.
Okay.
Stuff.
And are you open to a suggestion?
Yeah.
How about we not have people have to go talk to their neighbors and get approval?
Okay.
That, that might be a little dicey for some folks, so. Can I encourage you to maybe remove that from your recommendation before we start talking about it up here?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Well, first, Jacob, I want to commend you. What an excellent job you have done. You are a very articulate speaker and clearly a very talented writer. You have some other folks with you, and I have Addie McConnell, who has asked to speak as well. So if you would yield the floor to Addie for a moment.
She already did like 50% of it.
She wrote it.
I just, I had her sign up, or she had signed up, so I want to make sure she has the opportunity to speak.
I signed up just in case we needed to. I didn't have anything I really needed.
Okay, very good. And before the council starts to discuss this, and I'll ask you folks to stay right there if you would, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council on this subject? Yes, ma'am, if I could ask you to step up to the lectern and state your name and address for the record, you'll have the council's attention.
Um, my name is Debbie Trinari, 409 South Franklin Street. We've been here wanting chickens as well. I also wanted to see if we could add ducks, kind of the same thing, as well as a limit on them. Kind of following the same rules, you know, the smell, the sound, and all that, but we wanted to make sure that waterfowl, you know, was under the same thing as well as the hens, just so that it wasn't limited to just chickens, too.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's, that's all I wanted to put in.
Okay, very good. Well, we appreciate you speaking. The floor remains open.
I do have a question. Why ducks?
Could I ask you to get back to the lecture?
Again. I'm just asking, why are ducks wanting?
Um, it's another 4-H project, and they're very therapeutic. Um, my neighbors love watching my ducks, and they will eat bugs in your backyard as well as chickens.
They will eat bugs, as do chickens.
Yes.
Don't eat chickens.
No, they don't eat the chickens, but they will eat the bugs in the yard, and, I mean, they do just as well. They lay eggs, too, and people like duck eggs just as well.
Okay.
So, yeah.
All right. Thank you very much. And the floor remains open. All right, council members, and let's not forget that Councilmember Hughes is on the phone as well, so, discussion.
So I'll start. I, I remember the lively discussion that this generated online when you guys started the petition. I just, to Mayor Ellis's point, commend all of you for coming in here and really standing up and giving these speeches. I think it takes a lot of guts to get up here and do that, to come in tonight. Don't know if I'm there yet, but I would be interested in how other cities are handling it, what issues they've run into with chickens and stuff being allowed. But I really want to tell you, kudos to all of you for putting the work in. It's more than a lot of people have done when they get online and do that, and you know, it shows a lot of Um, it's more than a lot of people have done when they get online and do that and you know, it shows a lot of initiative, so thank you for coming in tonight.
I just wanna cabbage onto that. Um, evidently there were a few choice comments about my photograph with you as though I was all for chickens in the city. And I don't remember who exactly was at the door, but I had said when they asked if I would sign the petition that I can't sign the petition because like Councilmember Graves, I'm not there yet. But I absolutely will do what my public wants to do. And for the people who show up, as we hear frequently, that's who gets to make the decisions. So, no decision is gonna be made tonight, but we're going to be identifying a direction so that we can get more information. And to Mister Graves's questions, I'm gonna bet Mister Hendershot already has some answers for us. Mister Hendershot.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening. I'll start with what our current regulations say here for Spring Hill. Um, basically foul, including chickens, turkeys, ducks, geese and guinea and other domestic fowl are not allowed in the city. There is an exception for, um, zone, for districts that are zone agriculture or rural residential, which would be large lots. Um, they are, they are allowed in those two specific areas. Um, the other, uh, section of our code talks about uh, unlawful to keep harbor or own any, in any way possessed within the corporate city limits. And then it gets into any foul, including chickens, turkeys, um. Uh, and then there's a couple of exceptions for laboratory purposes and, uh, those that are within the zoning ordinance. As far as the other communities, um, we did reach out to five or six. Um, and the information that you were provided, um, by, by the young man and I, I, again, I can, I commend him for his work. Them for their work. We, we talked to Lewis Burke, for example. Lewis Burke does allow chickens within the city limits. There are a list of seven different criteria there that need to be met. Then the overwhelming theme becomes minimum of three acres. Uh, Paola does allow chickens in, in the city of Paola with a minimum of three acres. Um, Oletha is the same. However, they do have an exception that says if less than three acres, they can apply for a special use permit. Uh, city of Gardner, uh, does not allow chickens unless on areas of more than three acres. And then they identify what's called the harm, homestead farming provisions. Uh, but again, that's, that's limited to three acres in size or more, roosters prohibited, et cetera. Overland Park says that chickens are allowed on property greater than three acres. For smaller properties and approval of a special use permit by the city council is required.
Which, was that, I'm sorry?
Overland Park.
Overland Park, thank you.
Uh, Prairie Village, this has been a recent topic of conversation with them at their council meetings. And on July sixth, they voted to approve changing to the, the ordinance. Uh, but then remanded it back to the planning commission to develop that language. Currently Prairie Village, I don't believe allows chickens, but there was a movement for that.
Okay.
And their council was, was in the same manner as, as, uh, this council is Leewood, same thing, three acres or more. If less than three acres, it can go to a variance committee. Those are the, those are just a handful of the communities we, we reached out to. Um, we didn't have a lot of conversation on enforcement. We can reach out to the Animal Control and or Police and see what, what issues that may arise in those communities, if any, uh, related to, uh, to chickens. But that's just a sample of some of the communities in this area.
Okay. Um, Ms. Trinari, not to put you on the spot, but when one piece of information was delivered, you shook your head like you might have some different information? Yes, please. If you don't mind.
We have some friends in Gardner and they don't have three acres. They actually were the ones who went in front of the board in Gardner and actually got things turned. And there's multiple people in their neighborhood who actually have chicken coops and that, and they don't have three acres.
Okay.
So I don't think that's.
Double check. Okay, I'm happy to do that.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. That was Gardner, you said?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, other discussion among council members?
Um, why fifteen feet from a shared property line? Where did that number come from?
I was just looking at other cities' ideas for their rules on it. And that was one of the things that came up. I mean, it could, like if you didn't have a fence. They might not want it so close to their property.
Okay.
And then what about like vaccinations for the chickens and such? Or having them checked for diseases, things like that?
You should probably have to have them checked every once in a while.
And we can find out what some best practices are, I bet.
Yep.
Okay.
So, you're not saying to have chickens that aren't vaccinated or anything like that, you're?
No.
Okay, so you're not talking like a total free range chicken without vaccination type?
I think that's quite what a free range chicken is.
I don't know, but that's my definition. It's my definition, cause I don't know.
Some of them are armed and then they form gangs, so.
That's a mean flock. But, um, also, I think all I have in here. Um, like the mayor, I, I'm not there yet, um, but I'm trying to think through them, some things here, um. Nuisance of, of, of smell is a big concern. And you're saying you need clean, clean the coop every two weeks. Um, well, how do cities go about policing that? Do you know? Have you seen that?
Um, I mean, if they maybe get complaints from neighbors, they could come check it out and see.
Okay.
How it is.
I believe that's why Garden, I mean, why Oletha has the permit process for smaller parcels is that they can remove the permit for, um, citizens who don't care for their chickens as well and, um, get multiple complaints from their neighbors.
Well, I think I like the idea of more of an annual permit process so that if somebody's not providing good care for their animals, then the, based upon a complaint driven process, they may lose their right to have chickens. One of the other things that concerns me, along with, with what Mister Leighton's saying is not everybody takes good care of their property. Not everybody takes good care of their animals. And if somebody is harvesting the chickens, are they doing it in an ethical manner? Are they cleaning up? Are they ensuring that, um, are they ensuring that, uh, health and safety issues are being taken care of? And that might be able to be resolved through an annual permitting process. I wouldn't want it to be onerous. I don't think it needs to come to the city council. I think it's certainly something that could be handled at the front desk. But I, I do think there would have to be something, some check in balance. Um, particularly if we're removing that component of requiring neighbor approval. And again, I think removing that is probably in everyone's best interest. Mister Owen, your thoughts?
Uh, he's given us a lot to think about. Like where I lived, they're not allowed because of homeowners association.
Same here.
But, uh, you've given us a lot to think about and, uh, I commend you on what you've done. I really do.
Thank you.
So as.
I'm still on the fence on that.
Okay, so as far as next steps go, I would like this group of young people to be able to work with somebody on city staff to get some of these questions answered. And then I'd like them to be able to present to the planning commission so that the planning commission can vet this and make a recommendation to the city council. And I think that's the appropriate process for us to go through. Mister Hendershot, do you have a suggestion of a staff member that these folks can work with? Because if you don't, I do.
Well, uh, enforcement mechanism would either be through animal control or through code enforcement.
Okay.
Depending on, on how that's written, on how an ordinance would be written. So I think it would be very important to have one or both representatives there. Um, be, be a part of these conversations, but if you have a, a different suggestion, I'm, I'm open.
No, if you weren't going to suggest a name, I was going to suggest your name, so.
I'd be happy to do that.
No, I, I think if, if Chief Hinson could provide an advocate and, or a representative or other and if Mister Burton could provide a representative and then just set up a, a meeting with these, are you folks willing to do that?
Yes.
Parents in the audience, are you willing to bring them? Um, set up a meeting here at City Hall, talk about these issues, say what's on your mind. And then we will ask that they start to put a little effort into putting together an ordinance for you to present to the planning commission at a regularly scheduled meeting. And then the planning commission will make a recommendation to the governing body and the governing body will vote on it.
Alright.
Sound like a plan?
Yep.
Alright, I do have another thing that I wanna have answered for me is on stormwater runoff. And with the coop and, and adjoining property owner and having, you know, rains comes into the chicken coop and how that would be handled, how cities are dealing with that, because, you know, least thing you want is to be downhill and if it's not being taken care of, um, and how could that spread disease? Uh, it always goes back to, a lot of these things are health and safety issues with me. Um, that's the top priority for me. So until I know that it's not a health and safety issue, that's where I'm not gonna sign off on it. So those have to all be addressed.
Okay. Alright, anything else for this group of young people? Again, thank you very much. I could not be more impressed. Mister Hendershot?
If I could get some contact information of, of who to, to get a hold of, that would be very helpful.
Sure, um, I'll tell you what, so that we can move on to the next agenda item, um, Madam Clerk. Or, could you get that information from them? Terrific. Thank you again. Excellent work, excellent work.
Can I say something real quick?
Of course.
When you were lis- listing off the cities that had the three acre rule, I'm pretty sure Prairie Village just changed that, but I'm not sure about the rules.
That was, that was the one mayor that they just recently addressed that and it was sent to their planning commission.
Okay.
July sixth, they did that.
Okay, very good. So, thank you again. Um, Ms. Garrity, our city clerk, wants to get some contact information from you so that we can set up those meetings, okay?
Okay.
Thank you again.
Thank you for having us.
Alright, next item is discussion on the spending plan for projected revenue adjustments due to COVID nineteen impact. Ms. Landis, you have the floor.
Alright, thank you very much. I believe, yep, here we go. Um, so we have been putting together, um, and a monthly um, forecast or production based on the impacts of the pandemic situation and the impacts on, on, um, spending overall in the communities based on sales tax, payment of property taxes and the impact that that has on our city budget and our revenue projections for this year. And that's been available every month, but we talked about it the last council meeting, that it would be nice to have a spending plan where you could see what all of the, those options in order to offset those projected shortfalls might be. And so we've put together a draft, um, here, just to kind of get your input, see what else you'd like to see from it. Um, talk a little bit about what we see, the things that have already been put in place. Um, and were kind of the first things that, that took place. And then there's some other items that we think could take place before the end of the year, uh, to better, um, support the, um, year ending balance and the carryover for next year. So the purpose was, is to identify the areas of concern where revenue shortages in major funds may impact city services or budgeted expenditures. And our focus is to address the funds mostly directed, uh, directly impacted by sales tax. I would say property tax to a lesser degree, but only because we've already received, um, the bulk of our, our property tax for the year. And the sales taxes really what's up in the air for the next six months, so we already kind of know where we are, um, on property tax receipts. So the focus here is the general fund and those special, um, sales taxes, which also support the equipment fund. And all other funds have their own revenue sources and so they are not on our immediate list. We're projecting, we're paying attention to them, but they're not necessarily something where you need to make immediate steps to take it, uh, take care of those. Um, the, the plan does include adjustments made in, uh, early twenty twenty to immediately offset the expected shortfalls. And it identifies additional areas where adjustments may occur if they're needed. The projected shortfall, this is a combination of a couple of different funds, not, um, not just the general fund. Is about four hundred thousand, four hundred fifteen thousand. Um, it does include a twenty-five percent projected shortfall in sales tax. However, we'll talk here, uh, in a second about how, like, how those tend to fluctuate from month to month. Um, currently, we're sitting at about ten percent increase in overall sales tax from this June to last June. But we also know that a lot of the impact, we haven't received a lot of that, those distributions coming back to us. We haven't seen exactly what that impact is gonna be over the next several months. Um, and also we have a varying degree of impact on several revenue line items such as municipal court revenue, the reduced or delayed property tax, but more importantly, the motor vehicle tax payments and receipts. Um, which affects all four of our property tax, um, supported funds and then the loss of facility revenue, rental revenue to a lesser degree. This is a lot of numbers on a small, uh, um, they look pretty small up here on the screen. So rather than focus on just the numbers associated with these, the total amount of impact that we've already made against the budget or is in progress, I guess I should say, um, is about four hundred and twenty-five thousand. We did carry over a hundred and seventy-five thousand last year in the general fund, which helped us get a start on the revenues overall for the, this year. And in addition to, we did place a hiring freeze in any open position at the beginning of the year. So we've count, accounted for here, um, three position vacancies. Um, at, from the top of the year, and those numbers, um, some of them look rather high, but they do include not just the salary, but also payroll taxes, the city's portion of retirement and the city's portion of the health insurance benefit. And so in addition to.
Ms. Landis, if I could stop you.
It's the city's portion of the health benefit calculated at the highest possible option that an employee could take, correct?
In most scenarios, yes. It's anywhere between fifteen and twenty thousand, depending on, uh, what for annually. So I've, I've broken it down by month here and tried to pick something in the higher end.
Okay.
Yes. Um, in addition to, we have had some vacancies during the first part of the year and also a couple of current vacancies that are not frozen positions, but of course, they do have an impact on the budget also, um, as being unfilled up to this point. So the two police officer positions budgeted for this year, they're not frozen, but they are still vacant. Um, one being expected to be filled by August and the other potentially by October. And then we did have a su- uh, street superintendent position vacant, um, at the beginning of the year, which provided a savings in overall budget. We have the aquatic closure, aquatic center closure for the twenty twenty season. Um, some adjustments across the board for, um, budgeted items such as fuel, the crossing guard services, which were not needed for the month of April and May as school was out. Um, some kennel charges where we've only used a certain percent, a low percen- percentage of that budgeted. We have a couple of increases to our budget that we've now seen, we ha- uh, need to pay attention to. Um, the overtime line item for the police department, um, is under budgeted by about twenty-six thousand for this year. Um, just based on estimates through June, um, doubling where we've been at through June through the end of the year. And then also, um, an increase to our budget for, um, legal services paid from the general fund. So we only budgeted fifty thousand. Um, our cost, um, through the end of June was a hundred and forty-nine thousand, so we're about eighty, eighty thousand, um, already under budget and then, um, actually a little more so. And then, um, by the time we get to the end of the year, I'm estimating two fifty, really have no idea what that's going to be. It's all dependent on what, um, where that budget takes it, or what, where that, um, those expenditures take us. And then, um, the delay of the comprehensive plan, which, well, this really is one of the larger items. We had talked early on about what items can we delay? Well, this one has one of the biggest impacts overall. Um, as it's a hundred and sixty thousand dollar project, um, but eighty thousand. Um, as it's a hundred and sixty thousand dollar project, um, but eighty thousand of it is impacts or is coming from being funded by special county sales tax. Um, and so I wanted to make sure it's in here because that does, as the sales tax is the one that we're most focused on overall, wanted to be sure that we showed that that is something that we want to still be able to move ahead with, but we're waiting to see where those sales tax numbers are gonna come into. Do you have questions about these immediate steps that have already are already kind of in place? No, okay. Um, these are some other areas where we've identified additional measures that we could um enact if we needed to, um, or if you decide that you want to move ahead with any of these now, um, to better secure the end of the year. We did at the end of twenty nineteen transfer um an amount of a hundred and fifty thousand from the general fund to the equipment fund. And you can transfer that money back to the general fund, that would be okay to reverse. Um, and it would obviously impact the ability to purchase um future items in the equipment fund. It does not have its own revenue source other than monies coming in from sales tax or, in this case, the general fund. Um, we couldn't uh suspend the employee education reimbursement program, which is five thousand dollars. We could temporarily suspend the cost sharing of the salt expenditure with the special highway fund. Uh, we do uh try to budget a little bit of expenditure to share with the special highway fund, fifteen thousand is all we've been able to do for the salt expenditure, but that is a possibility. Uh, we could defer um one of the twenty twenty equipment purchases, which is a steel salt spreader, um, about eighteen thousand five hundred, and redirect those funds back to the general fund. Uh, we could um enact some budget cuts across all of the departmental budgets of five percent, ten percent, um, pick a number. I, we did not put a number in here, that's kind of undecided, something we definitely need to have more conversation about, especially since we're already through June. Several i- it's not, um, it would be difficult to be able to just cut an actual percentage. We'd have to really go in and target specific um services. And then um we could redirect some of the special county sales tax, which goes into its own fund. Um, that money is typically um partially um funding the equipment fund, which is where we replace our vehicles and equipment from and or any other um technology equipment, those types of things. We could take that money and redirect it back to the general fund as well. Um, so those are some other items we came up with. We're obviously open to any other discussion um and items that you may think of that we could pay attention to and see how it would fit into this. Do you, Mr. Hindershaw, do you have anything to add to the discussion?
Couple of things.
Sure.
I I just wanna clarify that um with regards to the potential or the adjustments available on the budget cuts, and the example was given was five five uh or ten percent somewhere in that area. Um, w- we have done very extensive work um in every budget to go through those, the superintendents, the department heads, et cetera, have gone through, tried to identify if there are areas that could be reallocated, for example, for training, for conferences, those kinds of things. Um, much of that has been reduced or reallocated to other areas. So um, I I guess my point is our our budgets are very, to use my words, very skinny at this point anyways. Um, the, gosh, now I forgot my my second point. Oh, I don't, I don't believe you mentioned the voluntary furlough. Yeah, voluntary furloughs was something that uh uh through the recession area at times that that we looked at, and there were there were uh uh two or three employees that took advantage of that. And that's another area that we could we could look at, but simple strictly on a voluntary basis.
Okay. One of the things that I would like to do is have this discussion at the second meeting of each month, because we we should have data that we accrue during the course of the month, whether it be sales tax data, um, fees that uh we were anticipating, et cetera. And by that second meeting, be able to provide an update to the public as to what the overall health of our budget is. The other thing is, um, Mr. Hindershaw, if you could have Ms. Jones, I think it would be appropriate if she could pull the staff and find out what the overall interest might be in um voluntary furloughs. Just so if we know if we have to go that route, do we have some interest? Because if we don't, and we get to a point of, for lack of a better term, desperation, we may have to look at more draconian measures. So I would like to be able to to find that out.
Um, and if I might also add, Mrs. Hughes and I were um talking about just some of this information and and uh some of the the topic of, and I believe you all mentioned it even at the last meeting, was what happens when we get to the end of the year and we're starting to see that rollover effect of those that may have lost their jobs, that maybe were making it through the first part of the year, but maybe not the end of the year, and that impact on payments of property taxes and or um not spending as much, and how that's going to impact our twenty-one budget and what that might look like. So carrying this same exercise over to taking a look at what we could even suspend, starting at the beginning of the year, just until we know what the foothold is for twenty twenty-one might be a good exercise as well.
Melanie, on the salt uh spreader and the salt purchase, when is that usually made? When would we have to know if we needed to um suspend that purchase?
I don't make that transfer until the end of the year each year, so we could make that decision anytime up till the end of the year. The salt purchases are made throughout the year, in the winter months and the early part of the year, as we approach the fall, and they're expended from the special highway fund. And then if the money is available in the general fund, we'll make a transfer for a portion of those expenses.
Okay, cuz I wanted, you and I talked about this quite a bit. The four hundred thousand that we're looking at on your spending plan is basically to curve any um sales tax we haven't collected this year. We have about three million dollars worth of uncollected revenue. That's not just sales tax, but when we, then you boiled that down into what's still collectible on tax and a little bit of property, and that came to your four hundred thousand, that's only twenty-five percent. So that four hundred thousand is a twenty-five percent reduction. My main concern was that in December, if people miss paying their first half of their property taxes, we expect in December one point seven uh one million seven hundred and fifty thousand in property taxes to come in to fund our general revenues through the first part of the year before our second part of the taxes come in. So twenty-five percent of that one million seven hundred and fifty is another four hundred thousand that we could be short in January if we had a twenty-five percent reduction in first half payments of taxes. And so my concern was that, you know, we keep looking at this throughout the year. Perhaps the four hundred thousand we're saving now, we keep getting some sales tax in, and it's not a a huge hit to us. But then we still have it come December if we do see a short in the property taxes.
That's correct. If you were to, if we were to, all of these things that we're doing right now, if we see anything above what we're expecting or projecting right now for sales tax, that is in addition to what's already being projected here. So for the, to go back to the sales tax example, I don't expect it to be twenty-five percent. Uh, right now, we're sitting at somewhere around um ten percent higher than last year. I've estimated it projected at twenty-five percent, that's a very conservative approach to it. Um, it may, we may end up somewhere around ten or fifteen percent if we look at the individual sources and how they're um working right now. So um, anything that we add back to it, that will count towards the rollover unless you decide to um fill a portion of these position vacancies, unless we decide to make some other adjustments. Um, so those will all impact those numbers. So as we make those or have those discussions as we move ahead, we can adjust those numbers and you can see exactly where we think we're gonna stand.
First property tax delinquency rate during the two thousand eight era recession?
Property tax, I don't believe, went about five percent, but our special assessments went to about fifteen percent. So that does have a direct impact on our debt service fund.
Well, okay, true, but what do those special assessments look like today versus what they look like twelve years ago?
Yes.
Um, I'd like to see that scenario.
Okay.
What a five percent impact, cuz I don't think we saw any where near twenty-five percent, but I'm concerned, five percent on property tax is one thing. Fifteen percent on special assessments is an entirely other thing.
Yes.
So to Ms. Hughes's point, I'd like to see what that number might look like.
Okay.
Okay, so if we could get some projections on that, and our best data, of course, sadly, is from just twelve years ago.
I mean, that's kind of what I was looking for, and what I was going to ask also, is based off of what we went through in oh eight and oh nine, those percentages of what we saw hit, then what would we anticipate those impacts would be for us? Um, and then um we just, if we have to roll back or we don't make investments in certain things that we need to make investments on, like fleet vehicles, sand spreader, et cetera. I mean, we just need to educate, you know, the community and everything, uh, you know, everybody out there about the fact that um it it could have a further impact down the road, cuz that was one of the things that we had.
Creating a bubble.
Yeah, we created a bubble down the road that we strapped it really tight, and we did a really good job of it, but then what happened was we deferred expenses, and then we had to try to catch up in following years, and then people were trying to understand why were we not making investments in these items and such? And it's because we were trying to catch up because of what happened, so.
Well, and part of that contributed to why we have so many items on lease instead of having purchased, because we had deferred those purchases to avoid having to do a mill levy increase or take other measures. And that's that bubble that Mr. Leighton's referring to, which resulted in, okay, now we're in better economic times. Unfortunately, now we're back in a position where we may have to consider creating that bubble again right when we're getting our equipment reserve fund built back up to be able to pay cash for items, so.
Right. Um, I do just wanna make one more, um, I think very e- important point is that everything that we're projecting um does not impact the reserves that we have set aside in those funds. That's super important point, um, that's always somewhere we can go, but we don't want to. So everything that we're putting together is so that we don't have to touch those reserves, that we worked really hard to set aside um in those in those funds.
That is absolutely correct. We've got other tools in this toolbox that we can use, certainly. We don't want to have to go to some of them, but we will, and preserving the city's bond rating is in the best interest of the taxpayers.
Absolutely. Is this in a format that works well for you to be able to to track where we're?
I'm happy with it. I wanna thank you for your your work that you guys did on it. Um, I think the monthly review is gonna be a great benefit to all of us.
Sure.
So we can stay ahead of the game. If something starts happening, we can address it before. Uh, I would assume there's gonna be a point on those options we have left over, that we still have the option to do. I'm sure there's a point that those are gonna become moot, that we're not gonna be able to deal with them as we get closer in the year. That makes sense to you?
Yep.
There's a point where just not, it's not gonna do us any good to do those options, so I would assume they would go away as we reviewed it.
Right. Um, and I would say to that, to your point there, and that the bulk of the larger dollars here in the additional measures are things that we can accomplish still through the end of the year, no, they're not things that are going to go away between now and then. However, if we are looking at this every month, if we know that we're getting to a point where that's not going to cut it, we can start coming up with other plans and and we'll have to tailor it to the amount of time we have.
I know that's what I was looking for, is is just something so we're all on the same page and and you don't come back to us and say, well, we're in trouble, and we're going, okay, what do we have to do to solve this problem? I'd like us to be ahead of the game, and I thank you on that.
I mean, I'd kind of like to know, the bigger bowl I'm kind of concerned about is the debt service fund and the things that go with that and that come into it, and also our utility fund, because some of that kind of driven into some of those things too, so. Um, the property tax from individuals and other, I'm not as concerned because like you said, it was five percent, and those people have a mortgage and it's required to be part of that payment is the tax payment into their payments that they're already paying. So to see, we would have to see some real drastic changes, I would say, on the property tax and people going delinquent on and foreclosures. Um, and even in two thousand eight and two thousand nine, we didn't see that. We saw foreclosures, but nowhere like at that that level, so. I'm more concerned about like the debt service on utility funds and things like that that could be impacted, where the the delinquency rates are more likely to be higher and more likely to occur.
Okay.
All right, anything else?
Very good, thank you. I have one suggestion, Mayor. Um, in in looking at the calendar, we get our sales tax information around the twenty-fifth of each month. And there's three meetings between now and the end of the year where we won't have that information, cuz maybe our meeting is on the twenty-second or the twenty-third.
I understand.
So perhaps we move that report to the first meeting, and then we have those sales tax numbers from the previous month.
Well, that's fine. I knew when the sales tax numbers came in, when I recommended the second meeting of the month, because I wanted to be able to take that captured along with spending and other, but maybe unanticipated items, to give a clearer financial picture. As opposed to, you get that number on the twenty-fifth, we do it at the first meeting, we're excited because, for example, we're ten percent up, but we're not accounting for some other, some other issue that had occurred in that time. So that's why I think that the second meeting of the month is important.
Very good.
All right, thank you, Ms. Landis.
Thank you.
All right, move on to announcements and reports. As I think the council and the public are aware, the Fall Festival Committee, a group of volunteers under the Corporation of the Fall Fest- Spring Hill Fall Festival, made the difficult decision to cancel this year's Fall Festival. And while I'm certain we are all disappointed in that, I'd like to commend this group of community volunteers for their thoughtful deliberation. I know it could not have been an easy decision for them, and just want to express my support for their decision and uh and and like them look forward to next year's Fall Festival. Mr. Hindershaw, on next, the next agenda, I'd like to have a discussion item on the appointments process, now that we have everything live streaming. Wanted to be able to get that discussion off the ground. And I would also like to remind everybody that we have a public hearing on the budget Monday. At what time, Madam Clerk?
Six P M.
So six P M on Monday, we'll look forward to seeing everyone at that time. That is, um, the only item at on that agenda will be the public hearing. That is all, oh, aside from the fact that I again want to commend that group of young people for their efforts. That is a lot of research, that is a lot of work. And like Mr. Graves said, it takes a tremendous amount of courage to step up to that lectern and stand for something. And these are kids doing that. What, what a wonderful example they've set. Um, all right, Mr. Owen.
Uh, Mr. Smoot, did we happen to, were we able to track how many people watched tonight?
We should know that information after this meeting.
All right, thank you. Nothing else, Mayor.
Mr. Leighton.
Like you, I'm just saddened to hear that the uh Fall Festival is gonna be canceled this year. It's something that I always look forward uh for the community. Um, it's a a great event for us, and so like you, yes, I am disappointed in it. Um, and then also, um, it's not gonna be a a public event for the high school with the graduation this weekend, but I do think that uh our community has done a very good job of trying to support the seniors that are graduating this year and having this delayed and the things like that. Um, I don't think it's necessarily been an easy thing for not just any of the students in the school district, but also for the seniors. And so I just wanted to express my uh appreciation for the community about how they're supporting them. So, uh, that's it.
I will, two reminders. One, I believe I saw an email from Ms. Mitchell through the chamber that the graduation will be livestreamed, for those who would like to watch it. And I would also remind everybody that when you wake up on Saturday morning, you will be living in the city of Bronco Nation, Kansas. In honor of the class of twenty twenty. Uh, Mrs. Hughes.
I'm just excited that we were able to start live streaming. Um, I wish I could have been there, but I am. I have a terrible cold, and I did not wanna spread my germs around to everyone else. But this has been wonderful. Um, from my perspective, being on the other side of the um our 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 new process, and the camera looks great. And I I really feel like it's it's easy connection here. Um, they put uh my call in as a panelist. Um, and so I'm not just a viewer on YouTube, but it was very easy. And um I felt like it was uh like being there. I mean, it's really, it really simulated the experience of being able to see you and talk to you and much more than just calling in o- on the line, so. I I really appreciate the work everybody did to get that up and running. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Uh, again, wanna thank Mr. Hindershaw, Mr. Smoot for uh getting this up and running. I know a lot of people were excited for it, and I know you guys put in a lot of time and effort. I know a lot of people were excited for it. I know you guys put in a lot of time and effort into it, so thank you for that, Mr. Smoot. Um, also to Mr. Leighton's point, congratulations to the seniors. Um, you know, they're a resilient group of seniors and they have really kind of rolled with everything and I'm excited that they'll be honored. Um, on Saturday for graduation. And that is all I have.
Alright, thank you very much. We'll move on to staff reports. Mr. Hindershaw?
No report, Mayor.
Madam Clerk?
No report.
Very good. Chief Hinson?
No report.
Ms. Landis?
Just real briefly, um, at, I believe one of the last two meetings you had asked for just a quick summary of fireworks. Um, sales tax impact from fireworks on fourth of July. I wanted to let you know, I don't have that for you this evening, but we are working on that and I should have something at the first meeting in August.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jenkins?
No report, Mayor.
Alright, that concludes tonight's meeting. We entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some is.
Second.
Well, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero zero. We are adjourned.